For law enforcement supplies, Sam had asked about this one. I think it's good that I let you guys know what that is. Those are basically bags that the law enforcement have requested. We actually bought half of the amount that they requested, and I think it will be ample for right now. Is if you had a mass shooting in one of the schools, or you got a shooting in a large ground, that when the police goes in, they pack this pack, and they drop it near victims. And then EMS, once it's cleared, then EMS has a lot of the supplies that they would need to save a life. Saving one life would be worth every effort. I believe, Mike, you would agree with that. Well, we talked about the numbers, and so we want to kind of be prepared of those things, even though it's one of those things you hope never gets used.
Yeah, it just caught me off guard that it was through law enforcement, not through EMS.
Well, the EMS would pick it up at a time where the scene is kind of, or that area is clear. And they'll have all their other supplies.
It's kind of turning, you get the different stuff in it. So for a mass casualty, you drop it, other people pay attention to the casualties.
Yeah, you can get a nurse or...
Hopefully we'll never do it, but it's a good idea.
Because they're going to be more required to do their job and try to go find them. And then like say you or I, or whoever, or anybody that has any...
Thank you. I appreciate it. I just didn't know.
It's something different.
I'll say, thank you.
I think we may have one that's not on here. I thought I sent it to Ron, but Chanel Contracting for the brick, it's not on the list.
It's not in the additional bills either?
No.
Once you, did you send it to Ron? Did you send it to Ron? I don't remember seeing it, Brad. Okay, why don't you take a few minutes? We'll go on with the rest of our business. We'll approve these lists, and if we need to come back at the end of the meeting and go with that one, we'll do that. Motion to approve the bills and transfers, if I could? Everybody's ruled Dolly's not mentioned that.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Second by Jerry. All approved, say aye. Disapproved, motion will carry. That's Bill's entrance. I put this on the agenda because it's something that the fiscal court approved about a year ago or so. It's called Harm Reduction Syringe Exchange Program that the Health Department had promoted. If you go to Nelson County is the only county in our district. We've got Hardin County is pretty close to getting ready to do their program. It's a needle exchange. The numbers are clear in the, I'm gonna go with the, I call it the real crunch of the numbers. 14,373 syringes have been dispensed to 96 clients since it started. Only about 5,204 have been actually exchanged. Many legitimate reasons for not returning. Now, there's no validation. How you validate that? Some have been confiscated, stolen, or some have been safely disposed of. Clients never return, period, and may have moved out or sought treatment. I thought it was appropriate that I report to you guys, since I'm on the Health Board and the District Board. I thought I was reporting to you guys, getting an update on it.
How many counties is this?
This is us.
Just Nelson.
Did you dad on the show isn't he helping any or not?
Well, you don't know?
I was supposed to say...
You don't know how many HIVs you've...
Or hepatitis.
Hep is the big one right now.
Hepatitis is the...
That you've eliminated.
There's no doubt. You can collect on that.
I will say this at our Health Board meeting of the night in Elizabeth Town, that most of the hepatitis was, most of it was confined to jails. Nelson County, Hardin County, most of them were confined to jails, and it was not involved, none of the hep, I don't think it was, were in the food service industry like everybody had thought it'd been. The hepatitis, eh?
You say this is just Nelson County?
This is just Nelson County.
Looks like they've got clients from...
They got clients from other places.
From like six or eight other counties.
Yeah, that's reasonable. They're going to take those counties, those zip codes, and get the counties that are involved in those higher zip codes to start. And I'll be glad if you want a full breakdown, I can have Sarah Joe come to the fiscal court meeting, give you a full report on it at any given time if you want to spend some time.
My thought when we voted on this, that you exchange a needle.
That's the whole purpose of it.
Yes. Didn't we vote that way?
I don't know how. I gotta go back and look at it, but...
To try to keep the needles off the street so the cops don't, our workers don't pick them up on the side of the road and all that?
But there is a proper way to dispose of those needles. There's what they call those boxes they go in. And I used to use them myself for a shop I had to do.
Well, that detergent jugs, I saw an article the other day, they put them in detergent jugs.
Something similar to that. You can actually, when you get your information, you can actually get that from the drug companies that you get your medicines from usually.
If you're a known diabetic.
I'll be glad to have Sarah Joe and her staff come to you for a full report. I can't even remember the full details of it. It was eight o'clock at night when I was hearing this.
It's important to give out 14, not give but 5,000 plus back.
Yeah, get the third of them back.
Okay, so you take yourself and you're a client, I mean, you're a nurse there, and you've got a person that's got this problem, and you want to turn away from a health perspective, it's pretty hard to do that, so. Reality is on paper it looks like this, but mechanics are like this.
I would have thought it was bigger.
That's a third.
If Sarah Joe's got time, why don't you ask her?
I will come and her staff. Okay? The Road Department report? Do you get that bill?
I got it.
Chanel, we'll go ahead and do that thing. Did you, did you sign off on it? How much is that remaining?
Sixteen thousand and change. Let me look. Correct. Fifteen thousand, sixteen thirds left remaining. The bill is for 90,702.
Okay, and we'll do a, we'll do a full final inspection before the next court meeting?
Correct. What it is, we hold a certain percentage of that project.
10% retainage?
Roughly.
Roughly that.
And really what all they'll have left to do after today and tomorrow is fix the stonework out here. And we're going to settle on that money until we come to an agreement that that's been repaired properly. Ninety thousand, it's the one on your bottom right.
Ninety thousand, seven oh two, fifty three.
I got any questions?
And there's 20,000, about 20,000 left?
No.
Sixteen thousand.
Fifteen, sixteen thousand.
Fifteen, six eighty three.
Fifteen, six eighty three left.
And then they'll be completely done.
So basically, they're completely done now. They're just detailed, just basically cleaning up, washing up a little bit. I'm gonna go through with the, basically the superintendent today. Walk up to everything, check everything out, make sure everything's good. So we have whatever we find today, we have to, for the 15,000 to finish. And then the stonework, they damaged a couple of stones, the scaffolding guys. There's four pieces, a couple in the north and the east, a couple pieces. So that's gonna, we're gonna hold that until all that's complete.
Did you check the rest of the papers over here to be sure?
No, I was, they looked, I looked down over here to help. Well, now, now what you're getting into, you got two contractors, three contractors over here. So you have to...
Fill out which one did it or which one...
And our inspector that's not scared of heights gets to...
And that's kind of what we did. Basically, like for the back roof too, we kind of, before the passing of the torch, we did, all right, the brick guys are done, now the roofing guys, you're up. All right, let's still walk through, check the roof, make sure there's not any punctures in it, check the paper. So we've been trying to do that, and I'll say we've...
John did a good job. Doing a great job. All in all, do you think they're doing a good job?
Oh, yeah. They're doing a great job. You can go through there, the detail work. Just like grinding out an inch of mortar everywhere and just detailing it. They have different saws to clean it out, chisels to clean out that rubbish off in the back.
I drive through there quarter, six, after six, about each morning. They've been here every morning. Now, times have changed a little bit. They're setting the truck now. I'm waiting for them to get daylight when I get here.
The detail of the scaffolding pretty much helps me.
Lee's gonna do us a favor, he doesn't know it yet. He's gonna, he's gonna take a drone and go, use a drone on the tower, and give us some more detailed pictures before we make that final payment too.
I'll let Lee do one.
You forgot to tell him about that, didn't you, Brad?
It's time and place.
You've been tinkering with a drone for, at this time. You've been tinkering with it, so we're gonna let you tinker a little bit more.
I'll let Lee go on, do the report.
If I can get a motion to patient L, what you recommended there, Brad, you signed all of them?
Yes, I have signed all of them.
Motion been made by Jerry, second by Keith. In further discussion, Jeff's looking at it right now. All approved, say aye. Disapproved, motion will carry. Just set it up right there. Okay, Brad, let's go to the Road Department report then. I'm gonna turn that over to Lee. He's moving all that.
Our Woodlon Road project started last week to fix the culvert and slide that we had going on. If all goes well, the road will possibly be open by the end of the week. So we're hoping that everything goes well. Our grade all's been down for a couple of weeks. We had a pump to go out. Grade all, the company said that it's gonna be six months before we can get a new pump. However, Steve sent our pump that we had on the grade off to hydraulic specialists, and they're in the process of rebuilding. So hopefully, we'll have that up in about a week. So it's hoping there's six months. Since our grade all's been down, we have been able to catch up on some trimming and spraying weeds around our bridges and guardrails. They're starting to look pretty good. We're getting close to finishing up on our asphalt patching for the year.
You better be getting close, the money's been taken.
We've had a lot to do this year. We're going into chip sealing. We have chip sealed Timber Creek glue. It was in pretty bad shape. And we're finishing up Simpson Creek Road today. We're gonna start on Simpson Road possibly today. And then we, of course, we have several other roads to chip seal before the weather turns code on us. Unfortunately, there's been a rash theft of signs in the Boston area and Woodlon area. Shady Lane alone, there's about $500 worth of signs that were stolen. Our flood signs and stop signs on Shady Lane were stolen. Woodlon's more vandalism than theft that we're having a problem with. I did call the local scrap yards in Barstown and surrounding counties, asked them to report anything to us if anybody brings any signs in. They said that they only take from, recycle signs from government agencies anyway, but they'll let me know.
They're bringing an old vehicle or something.
Right, yeah. Yeah, not only does it cost taxpayer dollars, like Shady Lane's $500 alone, it makes safety issues.
What's that? Sign theft. Didn't we do that a few years ago?
You did it state law, yeah.
Yeah, but didn't we pass an ordinance a few years ago that if, because Benelli and all of them are disappearing out there, it's a $500 fine if you turn...
Not local ordinance, nothing to wear up.
We'll give them all the state law if you can figure out who did it.
The one area on Shady Lane left, so we're out of weekly, so it got hurt real bad. Somebody took this out, and they didn't know that road stopped there.
Restitution, we'll get the whole ball of wax if we figure it out.
I don't remember. Could have been in our road, uh, road...
Mine, mine, sorry for interrupting.
I was thinking...
More besides the theft, the vandalism, you have people throwing barrels off the road, like at Woodlon's flat. People just throwing barrels off the road, and just creates some hazards.
Well, you didn't have the problem, you took over the road supervisor.
Bring some bad luck to us, I guess.
No, you're doing a great job, Steve.
As far as bush hogging, we're District Five, Jerry's District. We're in Round Ford Bush Hogging. We should be finishing up Jerry's District this week and starting District Two, Sam's. We did get some boom going down in District Five. We've started on mostly the Clonmeron and Wilkerson Road area. And I will get to do the lane for you before we get out of District Five there. That's about it. Did you need to add anything?
Mm-mm.
Thank you.
Landfill Solid Waste Report?
This is Tim Foster, so we're hauling boxes for that. We got one of our roll-off trucks, one of our newer roll-off trucks, 417, having some engine issues, but it is under warranty. They wanted to hand it off and a few other issues with that. But it's all under warranty. They got a five-year, or 200,000 mile warranty, so it's all under warranty. So should be get that back this week, so. We got another truck at the same age, so everything, basically, what happens to one happens to the other, but the other's fine now. So we're crossing our fingers. We got plenty of time with the warranty left, so. Hopefully, that should go good with that. We're having issues with one of our aerators. I'm in the process of getting pricing for that. So we had, we've been tinkering around with the old ones. They've been, it's 27 years old. So we got it rebuilt, and it lasted about six months, so getting pricing for it, it's around $9,000. We're looking at options. So early next time, we'll have some different options with that. That's everything with Landfill Solid Waste, except we still have a job opening, so if anybody knows anybody, spread the word.
That's what'll be in my little spiel here. We are still have re-advertised for a position at the Solid Waste Department for a driver and a tipper. That's a joint responsibility. And the entry level's right at about $40,000, $41,000 a year. So I get a lot of people that want to do that if they don't have their CDL. And then you get a few people that, when they do have their CDL, and you tell them, well, you gotta get off the back of the truck and tip some too. Their tone of voice drops a notch, then they don't want to do an interview. So we are still trying to advocate. There's some possibilities of some folks getting some permits here shortly, so we'll keep eye on it. Thank you. Joe, report. Dorcas?
Today, we have a total of 160 inmates. We have one on home incarceration. We have 56 state inmates. We have four that tap to other counties to court. So we have an in-house total of 155. In August, our daily average was controlled intake, we averaged 23 a day. Class D's, we averaged 37 a day. Nelson County, we averaged 100 a day. So our total average for August was 160 inmates a day. New arrests for August, the arrivals, we have 153 males, 59 females. That's a total of 212 releases. We had 112 males, 59 females. So that's a total of 171. Sentenced in District Court, we have two. Waiting for Court, we have 21. We have one on home incarceration out of District. State inmate sentenced, we have 11 controlled intake, 31 plus D's. Alternative sentence, three to 10 on parole violations. And we have six that are doing community service inside the jail. We have one on worker release. In Circuit Court, we have 78 waiting for court, so we have a total of 99 that is not entered court yet. Of course, this is our Circuit Court week, so that gives us extra inmates coming from other counties. We haven't had District Court, so some of these that are on District may be down. That's all I got to report.
Thank you. Still got a priority list in contract to get some, some more of the state movement. Well, you leave 15, then they send you 20.
Yeah. They put them out for drug rehab.
They picked up about 15 last week within that.
And we, I mean, you know, they, they release them to go to rehab, and they don't last. They come right back. Release them on parole, and they come right back, so.
Quite a few parole violations there. Thank you, Dorcas. EMS report, Joe?
Have a report for August. 600 calls for service were made for August. Out of that, 128 were non-transport calls. 1,153 calls for the year so far. Would report to the court that we just finished up the Bourbon Festival weekend. Of course, that's a pretty heavy weekend for us as EMS. We got seven trucks on duty, body cover concerts downtown, both, and five trucks on duty Saturday. We had six patient contacts from either place and three transports. So out of, out of that large population of a group of people together, that's pretty good for us. I would also report that this year, we tried a little something different. Both at the concert and the downtown, we were able to provide a portable repeater system on at each location. What this did was allow the folks that were working, law, police, and EMS, working those events to be off their normal dispatch channels, which would overload the dispatchers and allow them to communicate on the grounds, amongst themselves, for whatever needs they needed. It worked out pretty good. It's the first time we had that equipment available. But I think we'll continue to use that from now on as the events and other events. The dispatch was able to monitor those frequencies, but did not have to clog up the normal dispatch channels over. Lastly, I'd like to thank Road Department, Lee. We had several solid spots in our parking lot that needed to be repaired. They came out last week and cut those out and brought the paving equipment out there and did a really good job fixing them back.
You've got, they've done real well this year.
Yeah.
Practice.
Practice. No more practice, it looks like, with the bills are coming through.
That's not coming out my books.
It did. Okay, under Olden New Business, a report on September the 27th, at the Thomas Nelson High School from 5:00 to 7:00, will be a public hearing in regards to the Western Bypass Study. The study will show some possible routes. Bear in mind that under the guidelines set forth by the Transportation Cabinet, that they have to show several routes, not just one route or two routes. And so there'll be several routes. I have not seen those myself. I think, Bernard, you've seen a little bit of a glance of it. Crime and Prevention Presentation, Crime and Planning Presentation by the Planning Commission will be this Friday, September 21st. It's open to the public here. There's a bulletin on the door over there, and I haven't fully understood what they're doing here, but Jim wanted me to make sure I announced it. Crime and Planning Building Socially Sustainable Communities presents a comprehensive discussion of the interconnections between urban planning, criminal victimization, and crime prevention. That ought to be interesting. That's pretty deep, but it's a, some training for some of the planning commissioners, as well as the elected officials that want to participate. A proclamation, you guys have a proclamation, News Media, I believe, have put a copy in here concerning the Constitution Week. I think the Declaration of American Revolution had asked me to, to look at this and present it to court. Recognizing that September 17th to 23rd adds Constitutional Week, I would ask fiscal court to entertain or approve this and put it in matter of our public record that we recognize that 17th to 23rd adds Constitutional Week. Motion by Jeff, this is seconded by Jerry. Jerry was a little bit ahead of y'all. All approved, say aye. Disapproved, motion carry. Elaine, I will give you a sound copy here. Need, I think, you did get that, didn't you, Jim? Okay, next on the New Business, I'm gonna talk a little bit about political signs and right-of-ways. It's a kind of a hot button. Right now, we're all starting to go out and put up political signs. We've got some of our, we, our constituents doing it as well, overzealous constituents, I'm counting on. I would ask that you make sure that all the political signs are out of the public right-of-way. We have an ordinance that prohibits that. If there's any question, you can go to the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. There's actually a website, Brad, I believe, isn't there?
Correct. If you go to Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and look under Maps, and under Maps, you click on Archive Drawings, that'd be all the drawings of any road. You can scroll in and out, click on them.
On the state roads.
On the state roads. And they'll pull up the old planes, and you just gotta cipher through them. I got, for instance, 245, this time of year, you gotta look through 245, or you have to ride away.
Because it goes in and out. It's in and out, and those markers are pretty, those markers are there. When I usually go out and put them up, I find that concrete marker, in fact, go down 50 feet to find it, or 100 feet to find it, and then just walk back. It generally is pretty easy to identify. Generally is. But it's important that we stay consistent and keep our right-of-ways clear. If there's any question, we, I sent out an email yesterday. I hope you guys got it. Give everybody a few more days to review their signs, and then next week, we will start, the code enforcement will start going out. We'd like to say we'd call you first if there are big signs, because we don't really want to take those big signs out. But we'll try to do that, in terms of seeing, to view the problem. But I can tell you, Kentucky 245 is a large right-of-way. It could be 100 feet in some spots. That's how wide that right-of-way is. 31E, the new part, they've bought a lot of right-of-ways through there. So be cautious about that, because we don't want, we really don't want to pull up anybody's signs. But we want to put everybody beyond a level plan. And I, I called the state the other day on some there by Paget Drive and 31, because I got a constituent call that they were blocking the view of pulling out. And I did not go out and look at it, and the state removed it. Now, whether it was the right thing to do or not, the state, state did that. So next time, I will, I will make sure that our code enforcement goes out and checks those. Okay? Any questions?
In Kansas enforcement has contacted me, and it's working very well through him. He can email or contact any of us, and we can move them back right away. No big, no big deal.
Yeah, it does help, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
But again, if we get some, we get too many of them, and I only have a part-time code enforcement guy doing that now, so. Most times, a lot of times, your volunteers are helping you do some of this stuff, didn't you?
They keep them a sign somewhere where they can go pick them up.
If Richard pulls them up, or Logan pulls them up, they'll be at the county garage for a period of weeks. By the, they won't be in the dumpster, it'll be beside the dumpster, by the county garage. Pretty easy access. And they got some of mine last time, too.
The state guys, they don't do it. They just toss them.
No, they, they sent out, the state sent out a bulletin from their public relations guy. They're going to pull them and take them to their...
Road Department.
Road Department for a period, I think it said a week or two.
Really?
Certainly, I can remember I got the bulletin up. I thought I sent you guys a copy of that. Any of you that don't have the opposition, don't, didn't have...
Some of them said it doesn't matter, but...
I'm just trying to help, in a way, everybody's on, and keep the county somewhat clean, and everybody's on a level plane.
I think Logan said if you step three steps off the road, you're okay. On most roads.
Not, not on any state roads?
Yeah.
No?
Well, it'd be 20 foot on a state road.
He's talking about more city than anything.
150 is 50.
Yeah, Logan's wrong if he said that.
605 is 30 feet each way. I mean, I know about...
From center line?
From center line. 50 feet each way.
If you go on a rule, I mean, just give it a rule of thumb, on a rural secondary road, like 605 Woodlon Road, Nazareth Road, you go 30 foot from the center of the road.
You're good.
You're good.
zoning says it's the dip of the ditch.
Can you guys verify that? Just I've rated the white line and the center line and...
That is a road. If you're on a state road, go to this website, because I'm not going to call it.
And they vary. They vary depending on the road.
There are some varies, but if you go to this website and find, like, say 150, it can go in and out. 1245.
What about the county?
The county right-of-ways are typically 20 foot from center line. Unless you're on a subdivision.
Planning zoning says it's the dip of the ditch.
Yeah.
The water, the low water line is ditch.
But that's not accurate.
It's twenty feet. On the county road, it's a forty foot right-of-way.
Yeah, I got our training, he shouldn't say that at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
Again, the twenty feet, I mean, if you, if you, it's about fifteen feet from the yellow line to the end of like a wider shoulder, so that you would be five feet off from the shoulder under the twenty feet. But the inconsistencies, I, I agree with Raymond, the inconsistencies of, you really, you get so many, we're all, it's only, these, these signs are only out for, what, sixty days? If they're not a public safety issue, I agree, if there's, if, if you have a vision problem or a view problem with turning, let's pull them up, but they're only there for sixty days.
We ignored some of those signs in the spring that they're speaking of.
I agree. I just think that if, unless it's posing a safety issue, it's just causing so many problems with everybody, everybody's gonna get worked up a little.
Pretty junky looking though.
I agree.
Part of the problem is if you, if you allow the visual signs, then your real estate people and so forth say, okay, they all did theirs now, we can do ours.
It just, it just.
With the real estate people, then if we put it where the real estate, some of these real estate signs need to be picked up too.
Yes, and, and they do. Our ordinance actually allows for a real estate sign to be up so many days if it's, if it's not, if it's not in the, where you can have directional sign. But some of these farms, when they're selling them, they're off the main road. Just, the sign ordinance is pretty clear on that. Again, we overlooked a lot of them in the spring that were five feet, three feet away, you know, like you're talking about inconsistency, but if you have any question, I'll be glad to try to help you at any, at any given time.
So the county ordinance is, our main right-of-way is twenty foot from center line?
Not in every road. Some of them's twenty-five.
Now, if you get back, I'll just say Farmington, that farmway, okay, out in my area, those have a fifty foot right-of-way. The newer subdivided streets are fifty foot right-of-way.
Twenty-five from center.
Twenty-five from center, yeah. So it, it depends on if the subdivision's been in the last, say, probably ten, fifteen years, you're gonna have a twenty-five foot from the center or a fifty foot right-of-way.
Five feet.
But the old county roads, like Ben Irvin, one of those, they're forty feet or twenty each way. So it, it varies.
And you may want to look at Caris one seventy-eight oh twenty-five that talks about the width of county roads, they, it's been a, it's changed over time. And that's what Jan was talking about, that the width of a public right-of-way shall be presumed to extend and include the area lying outside the shoulders and the ditch lines within landmarks such as fences, fence posts, et cetera. In the absence of both a recorded or landmark, the right-of-way shall be deemed to extend to include the shoulders and ditch lines. So that's what she was talking about, but that's in the absence of.
In the absence of.
Anything else.
Sorry, it's kind of. If five foot kills me, if I'm putting, if five or six feet kills me, if I'm building a sign, I, I'm not gonna get elected anyway, you know? You know, if, if that's, because the signs only make about two or three percent of the difference, and, and anything, but it's what it does show, the public guess we're all out working. That's what it does show, so that's more important than anything. I'll be glad to go.
It's complicated.
Clear the mud.
That's right.
It's exactly right, clear the mud.
But anytime you see a fence along a state highway or a county highway, you can rest assured that that farmer didn't give the public government any more land than they had to, so that's a pretty good measure. I can tell you.
It is.
Any other business guys?
I got, I got one question. Sixty-two, he's talking about getting chip sealed, it's gonna get it over.
They're gonna get an inch over it.
I was getting ready to say, because the salt eat up our chip seal, why wouldn't the salt eat up chip seal in sixty-two?
There'd be an inch over it.
So you only talk about half of the story.
And so I was told by the Transportation Cabinet.
I was just wondering.
You talk about sixty-two coming to town, like I mentioned last, pardon me, they put a chip seal over, okay?
Thirty mile there.
Instead of putting a inch and a half of blacktop, they put a, a chip seal and an inch of blacktop instead of an inch and a half. I've never seen that done before.
So they can salt it, so they can grade it, because they put the salt on chip seal product.
They save a half an inch of blacktop money minus the chip seal cost, so I don't know what that difference is.
The state guy told me it's prevented maintenance, they're trying a new stop, and that road there was in the.
It had a lot of cracks, all good cracking, and then that, and that oil fills those cracks, is what it must do.[1743.71]